We want to get information around the county about different events, have a little bit of entertainment. You know, basically just a variety kind of program that we wanted to start. I think so far it has been a success. Yeah, it's been kind of a slow start. We're getting the feel of things, but you know, as of recently, we've, you know, figured out what we wanted to do. So it's been, you know, kind of right next speed figuring out what we want to do. I love being in front of the camera. I love, I love asking people questions and being asked questions. Just it's more, you know, on the spot kind of things like that. I enjoy, you know, being in front of the camera.
Well, it's been super great. I honestly wish it had been offered a long time ago because it's super fun and it gives me the opportunity to practice my public speaking skills. So I've got to interview the students within Nightway Media, our teachers around the high school, Mr. Peterson, a principal, and I've gotten to make promotion videos for things that Nightway Media is doing around the school. People usually see these videos on our Instagram, TikTok, Facebook and YouTube. So mainly social media. We've definitely got a great response, like our TikTok pages. Everyone loves our TikToks. Everyone watches our videos and I think the students have honestly gained more information. Everyone knows what Nightway Media is, even in different counties.
The grant funded our laptop. It gave us the ability to get a MacBook so that we could train students on how to edit video, splice video together, add music, put graphics and do the hard work behind the editing process. Students love it. Students have had, we've seen more creativity than we ever imagined. They're just coming up with fun stuff that showcases the talents and skills and the interests of students here in the high school. And then how do we get that and show the community that students have some pretty cool stuff going on here? Application process was pretty simple. There's the document that they have on a, I think it's a Google document. Just filled out what we're trying to do, what we want to do, the, um, what kind of support we need as far as money goes. And, you know, what's the end result going to be? How's it going to impact learning for students at the high school? I mean, we've already had students talking about, we want to do this again next year. And here's what we want to do differently and here's what we can add to. And, you know, so students are already excited about doing it again in the future. To me, without the Educational Foundation grant, we're not able to do 90% of what we've been able to do. So it gave us that jumpstart. If you think about it, it's a 15, 20 minute application process and the rewards are phenomenal. So I would encourage any teacher in the district, if you've got a project, fill out the application.
We want to get information around the county about different events, have a little bit of entertainment. You know, basically just a variety kind of program that we wanted to start. I think so far it has been a success. Yeah, it's been kind of a slow start. We're getting the feel of things, but you know, as of recently, we've, you know, figured out what we wanted to do. So it's been, you know, kind of right next speed figuring out what we want to do. I love being in front of the camera. I love, I love asking people questions and being asked questions. Just it's more, you know, on the spot kind of things like that. I enjoy, you know, being in front of the camera.
Well, it's been super great. I honestly wish it had been offered a long time ago because it's super fun and it gives me the opportunity to practice my public speaking skills. So I've got to interview the students within Nightway Media, our teachers around the high school, Mr. Peterson, a principal, and I've gotten to make promotion videos for things that Nightway Media is doing around the school. People usually see these videos on our Instagram, TikTok, Facebook and YouTube. So mainly social media. We've definitely got a great response, like our TikTok pages. Everyone loves our TikToks. Everyone watches our videos.
Hi, everyone. It's officially 5:30. All students, ready for the meeting of the board of education to order? I need a motion on item 1A, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 12, 2023 Board Meeting adjourned.
All in favor? Aye. All right, item two, our pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. Attention to Lee's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Lee.
Take your way. I'm Gracey Binningfield. I'm a junior at the high school.
Hello, my name is Cleveland Brady and I'm also a junior here at Marion County High School. This week has been finally, you can literally say we started a new semester, we started a new four more classes. We have a lot of changes coming here at the high school. Our new halls are getting ready to open up. We're transitioning teachers to the heel and to the new hallways. We also just experienced a tornado warning, which luckily nothing serious really happened, but it was very organized and our teachers were really supportive, so everything went very smoothly.
Thank you for supporting.
Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you, teachers and staff.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three, can I have any nominations for election of a chairperson?
I will nominate Peggy Truittman. Very true. For the election of the chairperson.
Terry second. Great. Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nominations for the election of a high chairperson?
I will nominate Peggy Downs for vice chair.
All second. Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all very much for your continued support of our leadership and look forward to another successful school year and calendar year. And I think all of us will agree that things are in a positive direction and we want to continue that moment that we've got. So let's keep on rolling. Thank you for my statement.
No, everything's going well.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to say that I've had a, it's been a great year and that it's been exciting to see changes. And it's been exciting to see a lot of smiles and changes and I look forward to the next year.
I will say something. Yeah, we couldn't have a better workforce. Y'all are fantastic. You make Marion County look good and we appreciate it. Thank you all. Thank you.
All right. Item five is communications. Five A is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight? Okay, perfect. Moving on, item five B is our superintendent report. Mr. Brady?
All right. We'll start with our continuous improvement slide. So on January 30th, we had teachers across the district that had received training on thinking maps, which is a strategy to help students visualize their thinking processes. So it's a, it's a visual instructional strategy. So very proud of what was accomplished on that day. Our staff really worked hard. Continuing on, Ms. Speek and Mr. Carey have students at Calvary Elementary using their thinking maps with their turtles. So nothing better than, you know, that real life instruction. You see those turtles on the table and the smiles on the faces. That's a, in the thinking strategy there at the top, but pretty nice photos there. Student success, our Calvary Elementary was recognized as the 2022 Leader in Need Light House Academic Honor Role based on the school's academic progress. I know Mr. Terrell and his staff are very proud of that accomplishment. So congratulations to them. Marion County High School's media class received an honorable mention for their submission to the reduced mental health stigma contest. This video and other student created video content can be viewed on the Nightway Media YouTube channel. And I'll just give a shout out to Marion County Education Foundation for that. They supported that program and as a result, that school media class, they also received a cash prize for that. So we're pretty proud of them. They've done some really good things this year.
Yeah, if you're not subscribed to them on Facebook, if you don't follow them, dude, it's entertaining.
It is. It is. Five industrial maintenance students and eight CAD CAM students recently became industry certified. So that's a pretty big accomplishment. Twelve nurse aide students have completed their onsite clinical experience and will take the state registered nurse aide exam later this month. So again, very proud of them for doing so. I call it peak moments. LES third graders got a hands-on science lesson about forces in motion from Ms. Blamford recently. So you can see there's some cool things going on inside the classrooms here at Marion County Schools. Continuing on, West Marion had a family Christmas night painting with over 100 students and parents in attendance. And we really strived and had that parental involvement and that, I mean, look, that's a packed house. That's pretty awesome. So thank you to Mr. Matty Lean, your staff. So three student ambassadors were interviewed by two writers from the school CEO magazine who are working on an article about the ambassador program. So you can see them there. Again, a nice accomplishment there. Preschool numbers, LES 34, GS 37, CES 19 and West Marion 34 for a total of 124. That number's been pretty consistent. And our Dolly Parton Imagination Library, there's 651 active in that. So I want to give a special shout out to Eddie Masterson and Jesse Cox. Eddie actually, I got a call, I think, was it on Christmas Eve? And 23rd, it's the 23rd and we worked on to it until Christmas Eve. But he, you know, during the cold snap, he came up and checked on the building and there was snow on the second floor of the high school where a service entrance had blown open and he quickly got to work on that. And I just, you all, I can't tell you what that meant to the school district. It would have been a significant issue had it not been for Eddie Masterson. So I just, I just want to thank him wholeheartedly for going above and beyond. That's, you know, that's what we're, that's what we want to do in Marion County and I'm extremely proud of his efforts. And then Jesse Cox came and resolved a winter weather issue and I think that was maybe on New Year's Eve. And I also want to thank Scott Spalding. I don't believe there was a day during Christmas break, Christmas Eve included. I think I was on the phone with him when his kids unwrapped their Christmas gifts. So I just want to thank him. It was every day we dealt with something over the break. And, and again, that's what it takes to move a district forward. And I can't thank all of those three guys enough for their efforts over the break. And this happens all the time. I mean, I'd point out those three specifically, but again, we have many, many great employees, like the board reference earlier, who'd go above me on each day. And anyway, I'm just very, very proud of them. And I also want to recognize our schools today. I was in Frankfurt today for a meeting and of course I was on the phone back and forth during the tornado warning. But, you know, I felt confident because we have, we have competent leaders in our building. They did a phenomenal job and I, you know, even though I was on the phone working back and forth with them, I knew our kids were taken care of and then that's a good place to be in. So just a couple of district updates. Marion County Public Schools, we received a favorable audit of our ester funds. I know you were notified a couple of months ago about that. So we finally received the final report on that. The Southern Regional Education Board has invited Marion County Public Schools to present. And actually, I'll give you an update on that next month, but there's going to actually be several presentations from the district, both with our principals and our central office staff and myself who will present at that conference. You'll see later on the agenda tonight, we had a representative from Kansas City University come in. It's the dean of education and Dr. Gibson and Mr. Simpson and I met with her to finalize our partnership to create an option nine teacher pathway, which you'll see on the agenda tonight in the areas of LBD, IECE, which is preschool. And then LBD is for special education, for exceptional child education, and then pre, P through five for elementary education. So you'll see if approved tonight, that'll be another, another option for our staff or potential staff to become certified as a teacher. And then finally, the seating package for Marion County United Academy is scheduled to be installed tomorrow. So that just about completes us with our new seating packages throughout the district. I think we have two more schools after that to finish. That's my superintendent.
Any questions, comments for Mr. Brady? Okay. Item five C is board member recognition month.
All right, so I have something I want to read and then I'll give out certificates. So as a new superintendent, the school year has been as much about my own learning as the instruction taking place in our classrooms. And certainly I've learned a tremendous amount about those into successfully operating a school district. For my first days on the job, nothing was more apparent than the absolute necessity that people in this district work together. Whether it's the success of an individual school or the district as a whole, the most important piece of that equation is productive collaboration. I can write at length about the ways our school principals find ways to work together, how our teachers collaborate with other teachers, instructional coaches or district administrators. There's also our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our custodians, all of our classified staff. We can keep the district running as much as anyone by working together. In fact, how our employees have found ways to unite and move the district forward is nothing short of amazing. It may not always be evident from the outside looking in, but from my seat, the way our teachers and staff have collaborated is the most important success story of the district that we have this year. However, this message is focused on another group who have set their minds to productive collaboration, our board of education. January, school board recognition month with those who work together are official, which should be appreciated every month. I came into the role of superintendent with what I felt like was as strong a resume and a wide experiences in public education. However, I quickly discovered that having a board of education that is committed to working together is of utmost importance. I've remarked more than once that I cannot do this job without having a board of education that is not only committed to moving our district forward, but that has the constitution to work together even when difficult decisions need to be made. As a community and a school district, we are very fortunate to have a boards capable of this one. Despite a very simple goal, the success of Marion County town people, public education can be very complicated very quickly. Our goal is to improve destruction, update facilities, support our families through transportation and heating programs. All comes down to a set of obstacles. However, through it all, our board of education consistently finds ways to have a meaningful discourse, productive interactions and make decisions to move our school district forward. At a time that is incredibly common for school districts and boards of education to come under attack from outside groups. It's become more and more clear, the necessity to have a board with a willingness and the ability to collaborate. I will hope, I hope you all will join me in showing appreciation for our five elected board members, Carrie Truitt, Peggy Downs, Joey Lee, Debbie Spalding and Terry Mills, who have absolutely put myself and all of Marion County Public Schools in a position to be successful. So thank you all. I got this time to present them with a certificate. Carrie, you want to come on in? You know, we'd like to picture Dave, so y'all. Just a souvenir. If you get a picture of all the present group, I'd like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ship it.
Well, I think the other four will agree with me in that you all helped make this job easy. So thank you. We appreciate it very much. All right, moving on, our attendance and enrollment report. Mr. Line?
Good evening. Okay, so. Try to get it at the right distance. So we're showing right now, as of today, 235, or is this yesterday, actually, 235 at Calvary. 473 at last time, these are with preschools, by the way. 358 at 11 Elementary and 403 at West Marion. And then coming down to middle school at 428, 546 at the Knight Academy, 668 at the high school and 140 at the Hues East Spalding. So that's 3251 at the district total right now, including preschool. We have our attendance year-to-date. So through January, we're showing now about 92.20%, which is still running a little bit below what it was last year at 92.99, which is not showing on there. Okay? And then the next slide, please. All right, this is our daily. And since coming back from the break, we've picked up quite a bit. So we've got some 95s, 94s and number threes in there. So let's just hope that that continues in that day. Looking pretty good since coming back. And then lastly, we're showing 85 that have been completed. We have 86 to go, so we are at the halfway mark. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item five E is our finance report. Mr. Brady?
Taking a look at my December compared to prior December. Property tax, I have to look at the reports, new law. So required by law is to turn our money to the building fund from the property tax. So I'm going to do adjustment. So if you look at the variable, so at this time, this year compared to last year, we're up 12%. About a half million dollars there. Motor vehicle taxes up 13%. The interest is going to continue to be as what increased from the bank. Our Medicaid is up. So overall, we are up $800,000 in revenue compared to same time prior year. Looking at the expenses, you'll see that the, we're favorable in a lot of those. 13% students for services and 14% in the school administration. A lot of that's got to do with reorganization and responsibilities and things that have been shifted around since July to do that. So you'll see we had some that are not with increased expenses in some areas. The terms of close to a couple of hundred thousand dollar fees without some costs in electricity and things like that. Yes, spaces and banking has been paid out of general fund to the high school. So still considering all that, we're still $37,000 less in expenses this year despite trying to increase some efficiencies and some other responsibilities. So overall, your month, we're about $845,000 receipts plus expenses to begin. If you look at the trend data on those higher ticket items that we always cut our past at this counter, we're at those bigger ones now. Of course, it's time to move our company. See, electricity goes a bit, the gas go up, the wall and whatnot. So we'll try to trade out. Mr. Ray, I had to save one of the buses ordered almost two years ago, finally came in. So we had a grant paper, something of it. So you'll see now when the bus is there is about $47,000 of the paid out general fund toward, I had the bus pay by grant, another had to pay by that. So do you come in to know, do you have that updated a little bit?
Scott, would you mind adding a column in between year-to-date and budget to reflect the percentage of year-to-date? Just so we know, you know, we see where we've been and now we can see where we are with regard to what we have left to do.
I think that's posing my own subject. We're at the halfway point right now. So when we analyze it, we can look at it like a picture presented.
Right.
Except payroll. And payroll is a little off because of the way it falls into the following August and stuff. So it's not exactly, but it'd be a lot better that way. That's the one item that will be skewed in that because of the way the payroll is set up. Is that clear?
Quick question for Scott? Item five, our district wellness and food service report. Mr. Wheeler, I'm glad to see you here. Hope you're feeling good. Thank you, mine.
So as you all know, Kim might have it beginning of time to see without the glasses. As you all know, yearly, we have to do a district wellness report by statute. So here it is and pretty short and sweet. Go ahead. Lunch, breakfast participation numbers comparison for, I left out 2020 because that was just kind of a wash. You can see though, in 21, in the fall of 21, our numbers did drop quite a bit. I attribute that to in and out and everything of COVID. We are back up pretty much to where we were prior to the pandemic now. Our staff is working really hard to make sure we got plenty of options, keeps our kids engaged and coming to eat with us. Summer feeding, we had another really good summer. We, we did take off the two weeks of district shutdown as the rest of the district did. The years prior, we had not, but then we kind of got into, you know, what if there's an issue with the van? What if there's an issue with the bus and nobody here in the district can deal with those things? So we did take off those two weeks. But, you know, it had 20 sites that fed lunch. Some of those fed breakfast, a few of them fed snacks and then two suppers. Those suppers are Bible schools that we feed every summer. And then on the right-hand side there, that is our dream bus and our vegan stops and the number of meals we served off of those. We did have our summer feeding audit this summer. Some, all the food service programs are audited every five years. So this was our summer feeding audit. We only had one corrective action that was found. That green poster you see hanging in our cafeterias is supposed to be on the van. Well, they had to take the cooler, the van driver picked up the wrong cooler that day and put it in the van and the auditor showed up and the poster wasn't there. So they followed the van, three sites. So it was actually three, right? That's because it was in three different sites. Not a big deal. It's not, there's no financial means to that. They did give us several commendations though that are on the van. People were great kids. Ms. Kim was very friendly on the bus. Taylor at one of the schools was very friendly and then they complimented the organization. Our menus and Mr. Simpson kind of put in a video of how to get to our menus. But if you go to our district websites, you can get to our menus. And Kim, I'm going to ask you to hit that link up there at the top and just show them just a couple of things on those menus. Pick a school. And pick lunch, just because there's more options at lunch. So a couple of cool things on this menu platform, if you've not been in there to look. That way it looks like just any other menu. Kim, I think you'll hit the waffle up there on the top right. So of course parents can print that, hit build a meal. And then on that selected.
They can go through and click.
Yeah, do they want taco, meat or chicken meat? Do they want what items they want? And then at the bottom of that, once they get it built or over there to the right-hand side, it'll tell you all their calories, all their nutrients for the meal that they built. Very useful, especially for our school nurses when they are calculating for our diabetic children or our parents that wants to calculate for whatever need at home. Back, back.
Did you know it sounds?
No. I don't do that either. Back at it now, Kim, whoop. You got too far. Just hit it again. Hit the waffle again. Hit filter allergens.
You sure we can't get different help?
Scroll down and agree to it.
This is so helpful.
It really is. It was awesome.
Hit apply. And let's filter out nuts and. Nuts and gluten. Yeah. Filter out.
Wheat.
And peanuts. Well, that's okay. But if you notice now, scroll down, Kim, just a little bit. If you notice now, you have more of a line for those things that that child cannot have. Now, it does have a disclaimer that it may not be 100%. So, there is still the warning to go back and look, but that is there. All right, Kim, I'm going to ask you to go back to the top one more time and show one more thing in there. If you hit select language, because we do try to be inclusive of all of our languages. So, if you are a family that's moved in here from anywhere, you can get that menu in your native language. Pick one there, Kim. Now, we can't read it. So, but I can. So, you know, we do pay for this program. So, no, I can't do it. We pay somebody to do that course. But with all of the things that that does, that is very worthwhile for us to utilize. All right, Kim, you can go back to our first. You don't have to change it back to English. It doesn't affect anybody with your screen.
Yeah, for who uses that?
Anybody can go to that. It's linked on the district website.
Build a menu. It's not like a kid can go in and pick out what they want or what they want for lunch at that.
They can't go in and order what they want. But if they want to go in, yeah, especially at our older kids. Some of our high school kids are athletes. They look at their nutritions for the day. So, they can go in and build their menu and decide what they want. Uh-huh. Program improvements. Mr. Brady mentioned tables at Knight Academy are to be installed tomorrow. We've been waiting a while on that. Tentatively, tables at Marion Middle will be installed before the end of the month. So, fingers crossed on that one. And then that will leave us last talk. And then the two elementaries that we're looking at major changes at. So, and I'm working on last talks package right now. Go on and scroll down. We bought also lots of kitchen equipment. That one on the far right is the high school stock room. It was old shelving, wooden shit, wooden shelves and painted a lot. Was pretty yucky. So, we went in and put in all-new state-of-the-art shelving in there. Go on. Peak moments, and Mr. Brady's covered lots of these, just some different things the staff does for our students. And keep going. Keep going. That's a list of our former school people we've worked with over the last year. And then our biggest concerns and challenges, staffing and supply chain issues. And my staff is great. It's a matter of having enough subs, really and truly. So, in the supply chain issues, I thought it was getting better, and now we're having issues again. So, questions?
Y'all are doing a bad day.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 5G is our 22-23 mid-year data performance review. Thomas, Dr. Gibson?
Good evening. Dr. Gibson and I are going to kind of just go over where we're at academically midway through the year. So, we're going to go over two of our diagnostics that we give in grades K through 8. We'll start off with I-R-E-D-I. I-R-E-D-I is an adaptive diagnostic assessment. And that just means that the test adjusts according to student performance. It is administered three times each year in grades K through 8 for both reading and math. It's a good predictor for KSA performance. And it also includes a personalized learning path. So, after students take the I-R-E-D-I diagnostic, it adjusts their learning path to meet academically where they're at. And they, our students in grades K through 8 were, spent a lot of intervention time and class time, not a lot of class time, but class time working on I-R-E-D-I pathways.
We're going to break down each school at this point. But before we do, let me just go over a few limitations in looking at data. I mean, no matter how we present it, there's going to be some limitations to it. So, just be careful when you're comparing one school to another, or even on growth. These are broken down into students who perform below grade level and at or above grade level. And as far as growth overall, let me give you a limitation there below grade level. You might have a student who is two grade levels below, and then one semester, they moved up to one grade level below. That's significant growth, but they're still going to be listed below grade level. So, you have to be careful on that end. On the other end also, as far as at or above grade level, you can have a student who is at or above grade level. Let's take like a fifth grade student who in the winter scores at grade level, but it's for August of typical fifth grader. So, they would just be a little like a half a grade below. So, you just have to be a little bit careful as far as making, overgeneralizing some of this data. But I will say, we are cautiously optimistic as far as what the numbers are showing us. At Calvary, go ahead.
So, diagnostic one was taken when? And diagnostic two was taken when?
Diagnostic one would have been, geez, first couple of days of school. And diagnostic two was early December. Am I right on that? But I'm going to refer to it as fall and winter because diagnostic has four syllables in it. It's just hard to say over and over again. But Calvary, Calvary, reading from fall to winter, number of students, percentage of students scoring at or above went from 26% to 57%. And on math, from fall to winter, went from 18% to 51% at or above grade level. Gibson?
At Last Talk Elementary, we began a year in the fall with 18% at or above grade level and progressed to 43% in reading. For our math, 12% were at or above grade level in fall and 36% in the winter. So, nice growth.
At LES, fall on reading went from 20% to winter, 37% on reading. In math, went from 11% in the fall to 33% at or above grade level in the winter.
Our last elementary school, West Marion Elementary, began the year at 23% at or above grade level in the fall and moved up to 50% in reading and 28% in math in the fall and 41% in math in the winter.
And before we move on, as you move to higher grades, that at or below grade level becomes a bigger issue because the older you are, the more students you're going to have who might be two or more grade levels below. So, that's what I'm saying as far as trying to compare and say, well, I don't see as much growth here. Well, maybe, maybe not. At Marion Middle, in the fall on reading, we were 30% at or above grade level. And by winter, we were at 39% on math. That went from 23% to 34%.
At the Knight Academy, this is eighth grade only because I-R-E-D-I is just K through 8. So, in reading, we began at 22% at or above grade level in reading and moved up to 30% for the winter. For math, 12% were at or above grade level in the fall and 21% in the winter.
At ninth, 10th, and 11th grades, we take mastery prep, which is our ACT test prep. We administer that three times each year. But the Knight Academy is on a different schedule from the high school. So, you'll see here on the next slide. We have one administration at our ninth grade. They will take their second here at the end of this month. 10th and 11th graders have two completed their third test. Will be given next week. So, we have a little bit of a drop there at 10th grade, 11th grade. We have some growth. We're going to wait and see what the third diagnostic shows as far as the 10th grade, as far as that's going to be an area of concern or not.
And those are overall.
Oh, yeah, overall composites, combined math and reading.
I-R-E-D-I questions?
Will we be going back to this in the spring?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
And then partial forward question, partial parent question. So, ninth graders, are they taking what is basically an ACT? Or are they taking a ninth-grade version of the ACT? Or something else in type?
My understanding is it's ACT, but I mean.
I'm going to add a little bit into that, just based on what we were told today. The mastery prep is kind of, it's a prep program to practice for the ACT. But some of the tests on there are ACT tests.
These are actually ACT tests. And just a disclaimer from the first test, our second test. When we do our first round of tests at the beginning of the year, we don't do it in a full sit. A full sit is, you know, you're taking 8:30 to 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So, the first, first time you do it, is we do, we'll do a test, a section each block. So, it's a little bit, you know, it's not as hard on. Whereas that, so those 10th graders, their first full sit was that second test is what you see in the preview. So, you know, it's like, it's kind of like what you're actually looking at. And these are actually, it's an ACT test is what you're taking.
And that could have been a reason why the 10th graders had a lower on the second than the first, just because of.
Yeah, it leads to a little bit of that because it's really the first time they might have that full sit.
So, by the third diagnostic, they're going to have another full sit, right?
If it's going to be the third session, that'll be the third session.
Ours is the same test. Our first test, we do it in one test, four days. It's the first time they've ever seen that. I mean, they are, they're headlines. The second test will do two and two. Our third will be full sit to get them ready to move up. So, this is a different approach since we're different angles and levels of that.
Did that answer your question?
It did, probably.
Other question? Are you all having, at the high school or at the middle school, are you all having courses like ACT course, coursework classes that they can take?
They are built into the general classes and then, you know, they spend a considerable amount of time in the library, which is their home room, class, no, they go sit. Then, you know, what's unique about mastery prep is it gives you school goals to work on. Then it gives you, each individual kid will have certain goals that they work on in terms of what standards they need for the law.
I just know my son took that as elective. He took part of the semester for the the language piece and then the other part for the math. And he blew the math out because he had that time with that teacher and with that program. And he really popped that mask on.
Yeah, at high school, we talked, we talked a lot, ACT, a lot of build, no work activities and a lot of lessons.
Yeah.
He did a great job. ACT boot camp.
Yeah. So, I wondered if they just had that because that really helped him a lot.
Ms. Brady, you guys all heard of ACT prep session for the ninth graders as well, right?
Yes.
And then I think Ms. Vanwaal has some.
She did.
Some sessions that she invites the students to as well.
Sounds great.
So, we'll get a better view of the ninth graders on their next test.
What is the intimidating first time you look at the data?
Thank you.
All right, item 6A. Any motion, please?
Make a motion. Consider approval under the 2023-2024 school calendar.
Any questions here? Thank you, Mr. Lyons, for working on that committee. You do a great job with it, and the cookies help.
I did nothing to work with the wonderful resources at my disposal with my beautiful brother.
Tell your principal, Brian, that I expected a little.
Sorry, didn't mean to write you out. Never mind. All in favor on the calendar? I need a motion on item 6B.
Please make a motion to consider approval of BG1 for the Marion County Public School outdoor classrooms.
I'll second.
Brady, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. And an appropriate spot? These are for our quadrant, basically over near civilians and six of your old school centers. We've had a couple of meetings with the district and decided that this was a really good opportunity to construct those utilizing SRR3 funding that's allowed to provide that opportunity to be outdoors in a more open environment for the fresh air as well as an opportunity to create some outdoor learning environments. So, these are steel structures with concrete slab, concrete foundations, in open air. They'll have a metal roof on them. So, they'll be, they're not wood structures, they're steel. So, they'll be enduring, have a high endurance to be there for a long time. And we're hoping to, once this is approved tonight, start working on some designs and just moving forward to, with a goaling to get these constructed over the summer so they'll be ready for the fall semester.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Well, the only, the only thing, the obvious question, are you or maybe somebody else can explain why Lebanon Elementary is not included? Just for those people watching.
Get your highlight.
Sure. That was a part of our conversation. And I think with the, kind of these intended future of Lebanon with regards to renovations, et cetera, and some other opportunities that might exist on that site, it was thought that that would be incorporated potentially with whatever ultimately happened at Lebanon Elementary School. So, it was, it would be difficult to kind of cite that in such a way that it might not be in the way of some future, future development. Yeah.
They, they were thought about. That's, that's.
We couldn't find a spot that we could, that would be guaranteed that it wouldn't be effective either than renovation or new construction. So, it'll be part of whatever happens at LES.
But once that site is built, once that situation is resolved, they will get.
Yes.
An outdoor classroom.
That was definitely part of the conversation.
Okay. Thanks, Brady.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All in favor? I need a motion on item 7A.
I'm moved to consider approval of 2023, 2024, no, consider approval of, we're on B, right?
A.
You were good.
Thought we just hit the calendar.
No, no, 7A. So, approval of the 20.
Thank you. I'm back with you now. Make a motion to consider approval of 2023, 2024 draft budget. I'll second.
Any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 7B.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of pay application number 12 to Grid Enterprises in the amount of $410,891.41 for the work performed and $118,695.53 to vendors for materials on the Marion County High School project BG21-103.
Okay. All right. Any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 7C.
I make a motion to consider approval of change order number 15 for the Marion County High School project BG number 21-103 in the amount of $23,475.
Second. Any questions here?
In the attachment, there was a, you know, there was an attachment with the agenda, but there wasn't a second page. Didn't really say what it was for. It wasn't.
Randy, you want to talk about that?
Somehow, I missed it.
There's about 11 items that are, that are, it's part of the, some of those are credits to the project. And some of those are obviously adds with the, with the end result being added to the project. But there are a multitude of electrical items, some flooring, that locker base remediation that we've discovered. The way it's tied in there is, in previous phases, we've included that. So, this was for the corridors that we're working on right now. And again, a lot of electrical items included.
Thanks, Brady. Any other questions? If we have additional change orders in the future, if you all wouldn't put, mind to put together this and then include it as the, as an attachment, that would be much appreciated.
With additional on that, what, what funding you have left?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we can see that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item, oh, wait, nope, acknowledgement of our field trip, item 7D. So, acknowledged. And then I need a motion on item 8, please.
I'll make a motion to, for student learning and consent items A through G.
Excellent. Any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 9 is acknowledgement of personnel actions. So, acknowledged. Item nine is acknowledgement of personnel actions, so acknowledged, and I need a motion on item.
I have the chair, I'd like to move if this meeting be adjourned.
All in favor?